It's alright.
The Muscatine City Council will come to order. Fran, would you do a roll call please?
Martha Raywall, Fitzgerald, Natwick, Tahati, Bynum.
Present.
Phillips, Spread.
Present.
Three present and four present and one addit- Four present and three addit- One present and three addit-
Yeah, there you go. We barely have a call.
Good job. Folks, would you please rise with me and let's recite the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. If there was anyone in council chambers that has an issue or an item they'd like to discuss with council that is not included in tonight's agenda, now would be the time to come to the podium. Very good, we'll move along then to the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be rooted by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda which includes items 6A through B, items 8A through F, filing of communications which is 12A through B, and tonight's bills totaling $1,339,666.79?
I put thirty-nine in there, Mayor.
Thirty-nine?
Thirty.
One million, three hundred, uh, one million, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Close to three hundred and thirty.
Oh, it is?
One million, three hundred and thirty, six-six-six point seven-nine.
Okay, let me-
Thirty on mine.
Let me recite this again, that would be one million, three hundred and thirty dollars, uh-
Three hundred and thirty thousand.
One, three hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Whoops.
So, move, Your Honor?
Yeah, okay, Bob, good job.
Second.
Tom? Any discussion, council? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries four to zero. Okay, moving on down to item number seven, public hearing. This public hearing concerns the proposed vacation of utility easements on Claremont Drive. A request has been received for the vacation of a ten-foot wide utility easement composed of two adjoining five-foot utility easements located on lots seven and eight of the Riverbend Second Edition on Claremont Drive. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now, is the time for the public to comment? Any discussion out there?
Move to close the public hearing.
Uh, motion to close, let's see, where was that at? By Phil, and a second by Scott, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries forward to zero. Okay, now we'll move down to item nine from the mayor. Uh, at this time, I will read a proclamation designated April 2nd, 2015 as Junior Achievement Day, adopted at the February 19th, 2015 council meeting. Here we go, proclamation Junior Achievement Day, whereas the city of Muscatine recognizes junior achievement of the Heartland's purpose to inspire and prepare young people to succeed in a global economy, and, whereas, the city of Muscatine will observe Junior Achievement Day on April 2nd, 2015 as an opportunity to recognize and celebrate junior achievement of the Heartland for empowering our young people to own their economic success, and, whereas, junior achievement of the Heartland educational contribution equips our young people to become the next generation of productive employees and self-sufficient citizens to ensure the economic prosperity of Muscatine, and, whereas, junior achievement of the Heartland includes opportunities for educators, parents, and community volunteers to connect classroom learning to life after graduation, and, whereas, it is fitting for the city of Muscatine to support the goals of junior achievement of the Heartland, and we encourage the continuing partnership of business, education, and community in achieving these goals, and, whereas, it is fitting for parents, educators, businesses, and other members of the community to join the celeb- join the celebration in an effort to ensure the future success and economic health of our young people and the communities in which they leave, live. Now, therefore, I, Dwayne Hopkins, Mayor of the city of Muscatine, Iowa, do hereby proclaim April 2nd, 2015 as Junior Achievement Day in the city of Muscatine. And I believe at this time, Jim Nepel, you would like to come up and sort of fill in some of the blanks here, so our council, and those in council chambers, is better informed?
Brandy Olson, as well as Jim Nepel here to promote junior achievement.
How closer to the microphone, folks, if you don't mind?
I'm Jim Nepel, I live at 2704 Mulberry, and I am an advisory committee member of our local Muscatine Junior Achievement Program.
Brandy Olson, also resident of the city of Muscatine, and a council member for Junior Achievement. So, we sincerely appreciate your recognizing the contributions of Junior Achievement in Muscatine, and encourage all those here, and also viewing the proceedings to, if they're interested in assisting and helping with Junior Achievement, they're always looking for classroom volunteers and folks to help educate young people about financial matters so that they can own their own financial destiny.
I've been with Junior Achievement for thirty years when we first started in Muscatine in 1985. Uh, we started out as four classes, two each in the middle schools, and it's grown now to over a hundred classes in K through five over this thirty-year period. We have three goals in mind with Junior Achievement. One is work readiness, so that when someone graduates from high school, they're ready to join the workforce. The second one is financial literacy, and the third one is entrepreneurship. And that's what we work through, these hundred so programs that we offer in the schools. Currently, we're serving right around twenty-five hundred students in K through five in Muscatine. We raise a hundred thousand dollars through businesses, individuals, and foundations to support this activity in Muscatine, and we have a hundred volunteers or so from the community, generally from the businesses, that assist a classroom teacher in providing this Junior Achievement program in K through twenty-five, K through twelve. The programs have run pretty consistently the last four, five years. Junior Achievement is making some major changes in the program to bring those up to date and current with what's going on in the economy and the city, county, state, nation, and world. So, the relevancy of Junior Achievement continues to be strong. I'd be glad to answer any questions, any council members or mayor?
Jim, what's the, what's the grade levels involved? Is it K through five or K through twelve?
K through twelve.
Wow, okay.
Uh, there's eight programs offered at the K through five level, seven programs at the middle school, and eight different programs at the high school. Combine those K through twelve, it's over a hundred different classes that are in, uh-
Okay.
K through twelve.
I thought they went through high school, but early on, I thought maybe I-
Quite frankly, most of it's at the K through five level.
Really?
That's about two-thirds of the classes.
And you said you, you raise a hundred thousand dollars a year?
Yes.
Wow, okay. Didn't realize you had that much financial backing. Or needed.
Well, we, we, we provide the, uh, books that the students use, and then also now, as you know, all this is being converted to software, and you use it through your computer or your tablet, whatever you're using at school, so we're, we have to pay for what we use in our, the twenty-five hundred students that are served, so that's where the money is, is needed. The volunteers are volunteers, they don't get paid. We do have about ten paid staff in Moline that operate nineteen counties for Junior Achievement of the Heartland, of which Muscatine County is one.
Anyone else, council?
Okay.
Thank you. Jim, if you want to come over here. Thank you, Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, folks, let's move on down the line here to item eleven from the city administrator. Eleven A, presented for city council's consideration is the first reading of an ordinance amending Title I Administrative, Chapter Six, Mayor and City Council, Section Two Salary of Mayor and Section Five Salary of City Council. The mayor's salary will increase to seven thousand dollars effective January 1st, 2015. The salary for city council will increase to forty-four hundred dollars effective January 1st, 2015.
Mayor?
That's sixteen.
I made a blue-.
Oh, Fran.
It's supposed to be effective 2016, January 1st, 2016.
There has to be an election prior to that taking effect.
I will have any more dollars than the rest of the agenda.
Promises, promises.
Okay, the mayor's salary will increase to seven thousand dollars effective January 1st, 2016. The salary for city council will increase to forty-four hundred dollars effective January 1st, 2016. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance as submitted?
Move, Your Honor.
Phil?
Second.
And a second, Tom, any discussion? This is a roll call, beginning with Phil?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
Motion carries for zero. Item B, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the vacation of utility easements on Claremont Drive. A request has been received for the vacation of a ten-foot wide utility easement composed of two adjoining five-foot utility easements located on lots seven and eight of the Riverbend Second Edition on Claremont Drive. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Tom?
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Phil, any discussion? Also a roll call, beginning with Tom?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And Phil?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Item C, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the official pay plan for non-union employees of the city of Muscatine effective July 1st, 2015. That is to say, 2015.
That is correct.
Okay. Uh, the pay plan for the 2015-2016 includes the addition of the communications manager and reflects the 2.5% increase budgeted by the city council. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Phil?
Second, Your Honor.
Uh, we give that second to Scott, and this also is a roll call, beginning with Phil?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Item D, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving an internal advance for matching funds for the Mercer-Muscatine revolving loan fund for the downtown hotel conference facility project. Cities in Iowa are required to certify the amount of TIF funds to be claimed for each TIF district no later than December 1st of the year prior to the fiscal year for which the funds will be collected. Uh, this internal advance in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars will fund the local match for the Riverview Hotel development. This match will be funded from future incremental taxes from this TIF area. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Scott?
Second.
And a second, Tom, any discussion? Uh, roll call, beginning with Scott?
Aye.
And Phil?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Four to zero. Item E, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution authorizing the assessment of unpaid abatement costs to private properties. Periodically, city staff provides to city council a request for the assessment of nuisance abatement costs against private property owners. At this time, staff is forwarding the assessment list for unpaid abatement costs totaling seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-nine cents. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Bob?
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Phil, uh, any discussion? Also a roll call, beginning with Bob?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Item F, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing for public comment on the Muscatine Municipal Housing Agency, or MMHA, plan. Certain modifications and revisions have been completed to update the plan. The public is invited to comment regarding the changes. A public notice must be published at least forty-five days before the hearing date. Is there a motion to adopt the role, adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Tom?
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Phil, any discussion? Uh, beginning with Tom?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And Phil?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Item G, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution of support for the submission of an application to the IEDA for the High Quality Jobs Program. Uh, and I believe Dave Gobin, you would like to speak to this, would you not?
Yeah. So moved, Your Honor.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second?
A second. Okay, who, Tom made the motion?
Yeah.
Second, Phil?
Scott, or me, I don't care, either one of us.
Okay, now let's put a discussion. Dave, Your Honor?
Sorry to introduce that idea. Um, the, uh, this particular application is for a company that is local and is expanding, and it was highly competitive, and we want to give the credit to, for the last year plus, to this chamber for, uh, following up and keeping a thumb in the back on this project. Uh, what Union Tank is doing is developing a new line and a, a business. They already have twenty people involved, they want to add another ten, as the application indicates. The, uh, the state of Iowa, uh, this was highly competitive against Wyoming, Kansas, and Ohio, who was incentivizing this company to stack that line someplace else and probably take some additional stuff, but that's not been documented. What I wanted to state was that Muscatine prevailed, the state of Iowa come in with an eighty-thousand-dollar forgivable, uh, I'll call it a grant, it's a forgivable loan, and the city is going to, is asking to pursue as part of this application, um, is trying to pursue the TIF agreement, which is, which shows our contribution to the program for the IEDA. Uh, it's not a big TIF, it's only like forty-four, forty-five thousand, and it's already set within a TIF district, so it's, and they're paying for the, uh, cost to set the agreement up, so it's, it's relatively simple, but I think the big news here is that, you know, with Greg's, uh, Greg Jenkins running the chamber, he, he had, uh, done a fantastic job of representing our needs and our ability here in the city to expand this business locally, and, uh, so my appreciation for his work there, and that city really would benefited from the, benefited from it. So, that is what I wanted to speak to and answer any questions about, because this is relatively a, a small project as far as with the city, but they're going to be investing one-point-nine million dollars, so, and it's going to realize some, uh, a tax increment, clearly, from that, so that's-
So you said it's, it's forty-four thousand?
That's-
Over a ten-year period?
Ten-year, we, we pretty much are committed to that.
Fifty percent for ten years?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the forty-four part.
Yeah, okay. Do we have an opportunity to, if, if, if there aren't any other questions, do we have an opportunity to hear something from, uh, Union Tank Car rep?
If they're here.
Sure, sure.
I'll, uh, I'll yield to that.
May be so bold as to ask.
Dave, just a quick comment, I, I bet it really was competitive, you know, these kind of things, so it, it really is.
Well, I'll let him speak to how hard it was to-
Commandable.
Keep this here.
Good evening, my name's Tim Robinson, and I'm with Union Tank Car Company here in Muscatine. I've been with the company approximately twenty-six years. I'd like, if I could, I'd like to give you a little background on our company. Union Tank Car Company started way back in eighteen-eighty-nine. At that time, they were part of Standard Oil Corporation, which was owned by John Rockefeller. In nineteen-eleven, the US government determined that Standard Oil had a monopoly on the marketplace, and they enacted legislation to break it up. When that happened, Union Tank Car Company was out on its own. Now, over a hundred years later, we're still around, and Union Tank Car Company is known as one of the premier, if not the, the only, full-service rail car, tank car supplier in the world. They do that by manufacturing rail cars, we manufacture rail cars in Texas and Louisiana. We have a fleet of over a hundred thou-, well, approximately a hundred thousand rail cars, mostly tank cars, which we lease to corporations. We operate seven major repair facilities in the United States and one in Mexico. One of those facilities is right here in Muscatine. In Canada, we have a sister corporation, it's called ProCor, and they have a very similar structure to what I just explained for Union Tank Car. The Muscatine facility has been around since, I think, nineteen-seventy-eight. We predominantly focus on rail cars which service the food-grade industry, such as high-fructose corn syrup, and acids such as superphosphoric acid, and some other things as well. We can, right now, produce approximately two thousand, six hundred cars a year, and we need to expand. Why is that? Because of government regulation. About, in nineteen-ninety-nine, the US government determined, mandated that all tank cars must be inspected on a schedule. Since that time, this mandated inspection is starting to align, whereas, over the next five years, at least the next five years, there are more inspections than we've ever seen before coming due. So, Union Tank Car definitely has to determine how they're going to address that situation. It's not only Union Tank Car's equipment, it's the entire industry, and they chose to expand here in Muscatine, which is a great thing for us.
Sure.
I'd like to answer any other questions, if you may have any.
Tim, will a lot of those inspections be done here in Muscatine?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Standing.
It's the inspection, and then subsequent repair as well.
Counsel, any questions for Tim?
I, the only thing I, and we talked before the meeting, um, if, if anyone has never seen that facility, you, you need to don your safety gear and, and visit as far into the plant as what they would allow you to do. It, it, it's awesome, what they do. They're cutting out chunks of steel on two set, uh, double, uh, tank, uh, welding in new pieces, that's in the repair section, the, it, it's huge, it's huge, and it's, and I didn't, I thought welding was welding, but that was intimidating, to see that. So, if you have an opportunity and, and you set, set it up, uh, by all means, I would encourage you to go do that.
Jim, just wanted to say, certainly fantastic having you folks here in Muscatine, and, uh, we appreciate your expansion and your plans for the future, we really do.
It is, it is great.
That along to someone.
It is great news. I, I do have one related question, is it fair to say that the air quality standard issues are behind us now?
They're not exactly behind us, we do have the equipment in place, some of it is operational. We expect to have it a hundred percent operational in the next thirty days. The reason that it, it's behind schedule is we, we've had some weather issues.
Sure.
So it's, we've kind of missed our schedule a couple times.
Sure.
But as I said, it's partially operational, and within the next thirty days, we expect to be in full compliance.
Good, good, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thanks a lot, Tim.
Thank you.
I did want to make a couple final comments. One was that, uh, the reason why we're running on this particular schedule is that we're trying to, uh, get council's consensus or approval of the resolution so that we can submit it immediately and have it acted on by the state, I think, I believe it is, next Friday. Um, that's one of the reasons we're, we're, we've got it on tonight's agenda, and also will show that we can be expedient, you know, with speed of government is a little different story than what they're used to. So, that being one, um, and I, I just want to iterate that this is a very positive development for the city, uh, on how we used all of the, we greased all the wheels to get it done, and it took a long time to get it to a peak, and, and we're, we're hitting the ground running. I just wanted to make those a few comments, in case they respond to any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Dave? Okay, thanks, Dave. We have a motion and a second on the floor on this particular issue, any more discussion? Okay, this is a roll call, beginning with Tom?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And Phil?
Aye.
Motion carries for zero. Item H, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on the vacation of utility easements. This request is for the vacation of a ten-foot wide utility easement, uh, composed of two adjoining five-foot utility easements located on lots two and three of the Hubbard Prairie subdivision on Fifty-seventh Street. The intent is to combine the two partials. Uh, prior to any formal action by the city council, a public hearing is required. This hearing will take place on Thursday, April 16th, 2015, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Scott?
Second.
Second, Phil, any discussion? A roll call, beginning with Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries for zero. Item I, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on the vacation of utility easements. This request is for the vacation of a ten-foot wide utility easement, uh, composed of two adjoining five-foot utility easements located on lots two and three of the Hubbard Prairie subdivision on Fifty-seventh Street. The intent is to combine the two partials. Uh, prior to any formal action by the city council, a public hearing is required. This hearing will take place on Thursday, April 16th, 2015, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
I'll give that to Phil in a second. Bob, uh, any dis-
So, it's, we've kind of missed our schedule a couple times.
Sure.
But as I said, it's partially operational, and within the next thirty days, we expect to be in full compliance.
Good. Good, thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot, Tim.
Thank you.
I did want to make a couple final comments. One was that the reason why we're running on this particular schedule is that we're trying to get council's consensus or approval of the resolution so that we can submit it immediately and have it acted on by the state, I think, I believe it is next Friday. That's one of the reasons we're, we've got it on tonight's agenda, and also will show that we can be expedient, you know, the speed of government is a little different story than what they're used to. So, that being one, and I just want to iterate that this is a very positive development for the city on how we used all of the, we greased all the wheels to get it done, and it took a long time to get it to a peak, and we're hitting the ground running. I just wanted to make those few comments, in case they respond to any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Dave? Okay, thanks, Dave. We have a motion and a second on the floor on this particular issue. Any more discussion? Okay, this is a roll call, beginning with Tom?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And Phil?
Aye.
Motion carries for zero. Item H. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on the vacation of utility easements. This request is for the vacation of a ten-foot-wide utility easement composed of two adjoining five-foot utility easements located on lots two and three of the Hubbard Prairie subdivision on 57th Street. The intent is to combine the two partials. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. This hearing will take place on Thursday, April 16th, 2015, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Scott?
Second.
Second, Phil. Any discussion? Roll call, beginning with Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries for zero. Item I. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on the rezoning of property at Fletcher Avenue and Hershey Avenue. A request has been submitted to rezone the northern point-eight acres of the 1.74 parcel located along the east side of Fletcher Avenue, just north of Hershey Avenue, from R3 Single Family Residential to R5 Multi-Family. Approval of this request would place the entire parcel within the R5 district and allow for the construction of three apartment buildings. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. This hearing will take place on Thursday, April 2nd, 2015, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
I'll give that to Phil, and a second, Bob. Any discussion?
We, we were looking at, Bob and I was actually looking at the plan of previous to the meeting here, and does that, does one of these dump out onto Miller's Hill as far as the driveway? It does.
Andrew, you're not quite dressed up like last week, but you still look pretty good.
I think that's their concept right now. Right now, what they included with this is just their preliminary sketch. I think their intent is if this gets approved, then they'll go to full engineering, and from that, it's still have to go through subdivision, site plan, prior to anything being constructed.
I just have, Miller's Hill's a unique feature.
Sure.
Put it nicely. I mean, we try to maintain it, it's, it's looking pretty good right now. I haven't been over there for a while, but it was looking okay, and I just, I'm really not interested in dumping a lot of traffic out on it, but we'll see where the planning goes.
There'll be quite a bit of discussion on this particular, because full-time purposes is just to set the public account. And then now I've heard the site.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, counsel? Again, this is a roll call, beginning with Phil?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
Motion carries for zero. Item J. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to accept the bid for transitioning of the Police Department Squad Car Equipment. The equipment to be changed over to the newly purchased squads includes the transfer of radios, partitions, and computer equipment. Three bids were received for the removal and reinstallation of the equipment with a low bid from Electronic Engineering in the amount of eleven thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars. Staff is requesting that city council accept the low bid. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Phil?
Second.
Second, Tom over here. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a quick question on this one. I'll wait for the police chief.
Better Michael Ass.
Yeah, okay. At the very bottom of the supportive memo, there's a note that says it may be necessary to buy more parts?
Yeah, that's due to the, we're in our fourth year of the transition, so we don't have enough for some of the newer cars that we have, because some of the ones that we had, we transitioned from the police interceptors, the old Crown Vics, to the new Ford Taurus. Now, we're in the fourth year of these, so it'd be our second turnaround, and the equipment will stay in some of those that we're transferring down, so we'll have to buy some, probably like mounts for the radios, brackets, and yeah.
It's not going to amount to significant dollars then.
No, it shouldn't be, no.
Anyone else, counsel? Thank you, chief.
Yep.
This is a voice vote, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posnay? Motion carries for zero. Item K. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve a professional services agreement for the Mulberry Avenue Reconstruction Project. It is necessary to have a consultant perform the design of the project. The city has selected Shoemaker-Hayland, am I pronouncing that correctly?
Holland.
Holland, for, of Corvail, to do the design at a cost of one hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars, which includes four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars for reimbursable expenses. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted? Scott?
Second.
Second, Tom. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posnay? Motion carries for two zero. It is now time for item fourteen, communication from council members in the absence of Councilman Raywalt. Phil?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Scott?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Bob?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Tom?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Randy?
Just a minute, things seem to go so much smoother with four.
It's not the quantity. It's the quality.
And the interim city administrator.
By the way, Randy, I think you did an excellent job tonight. Fran?
I have nothing, Your Honor, don't you?
And I have nothing, counsel, any other business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Meeting is adjourned.
I didn't think we were going to get out of here. Sam was gone.
Yeah.